We're going to go ahead and get started. We'll call this meeting in order. We do have a forum today. Here's everyone's here. To begin today, Dr. McKnight, will you offer our invitation?
I will. Heavenly Father, we pray with your guidance and we seek your counsel on decisions that impact the safety of students to stay at, as we set the district's course. We ask that you let our actions in this meeting reflect our vision for the children of Grand County.
Mr. Rivers, if you'll offer a pledge behind it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So today, the very first action that we have, first, Dr. McKnight, do you have remarks?
Just some brief remarks this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to all of the assembled members. I'd just like to let everyone know we have successfully returned our students to their buildings. Thank you. They are in for one day a week at this point, and beginning Monday, our students will be entering our facilities for two days a week. We'd like to thank everyone, our educators, our school administrators, our parents. Everyone has done a phenomenal job of following the procedures and protocols to successfully return students to schools. We're working in concert with our health officials in the community to ensure that this is a safe procedure. This concludes my remarks this evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The very first action that we have today is we will interview our candidates for the District 3 vacancy. And so I sent those questions to you a week ago to be able to look over. And just want to take just a few moments, what we'll do, if you have any objections or anything you want to change in the question, and then we'll go through and assign the questions and how we'll ask them. We'll ask our candidate to come in, we'll spend some time interviewing the candidate, and then we will deliberate as a board. If you remember correctly, the vote will be held on November 2nd. So first off, are there any questions or comments or changes to these questions? These were the questions we used for the last two vacancies. I'm sure you're going to give them to us. I was actually just going to start over on your side and let you start with this one.
Yeah, the question that I'll give to you, because that's what a great dog does.
You say so. I'll take number four. Okay? Anybody else have a preference of their questions? All right, if that's the case, then let's go around the table and assign the others. Yes, sir? Yes, sir, that's what I was going to do. All right, so if I take number one, Mr. Peace will take number two, Mr. Udi number three, Dr. Bullingham number four, Ms. Lynn, if you'll take number five, Mr. Rivers, if you'll take number six, Dr. McKnight, if you'll take number seven. And I will take number eight, Mr. Peace, if you'll take number nine, Mr. Udi, if you'll take number 10, Dr. Bullingham, if you'll take number 11, Ms. Alwright, if you'll finish up with number 12. And then I'll finish up and give the candidate an opportunity to ask us any questions. Does that seem fair? All right, any further questions before we bring the question in? All right. Ms. Chair, could you ask her a question of Dr. McKnight? Board members in your folder, you'll see that you also have the package that came from her initially. So do you have any questions about that there? Everybody, when you are asking your questions, make sure you speak up so that they can pick it up on the video, please. Good afternoon, Ms. Williams. How are you today?
I'm fine.
Good. Thank you for taking the time to join us today. This is going to be very painful, we hope. And so what we'll do is I'll open up our questions, we'll go around the table, each of us will ask you two, I believe, we'll finish up with 12 questions, and we'll give you an opportunity if there's anything else you want to ask us or add. Does that seem fair?
Sounds fine.
If you need us to repeat anything or anything of that nature, just let us know. All right? So first, if you would state your name and why you would like to serve on the Board of Education.
My name is Glenda Williams. I anticipated that question, and I wrote a brief statement. If you would let me read it, because I think it pretty well sums up what I felt. From the first day, I walked, can you hear me fine? From the first day I walked into Marilyn Hughes Logan's first grade classroom at C.G. Plaidon School, I fell in love with learning. I cannot remember all the instructional methods or valuations she used, but I do remember she made me feel special, and her classroom was an exciting place to be. She was a young single teacher at the time, and she went on to teach many children throughout her career, including my own son. I credit her with my local reading. There are many teachers and educators out there just like her, and I was fortunate to have many of them in my life. Education continued to be an important part of my life as a student, a teacher, administrator, a business owner, a parent, a grandparent, and as a citizen of Grand County. Our educators are tasked with preparing our children to live and work successfully in a world that is ever-changing. This past school year, in the year we are now in, is a testament to how quick and drastically lives and expectations can change. All of our educators and support staff have operated in a whole new environment, and we owe them a lot of gratitude for working hard for the children in spite of the circumstances. I weigh the pros and cons of facilitating support. I ask myself neat questions. I argue with myself. The questions I ask myself were, do I want to devote the time necessary to being effective in it? Do I feel I have something to offer positive? Can I handle the criticism that more decisions can sometimes be risky? Can I work cooperatively and respectfully with other board members and staff? Can I set aside my feelings on what might be convenient for bad-spoiled family member or someone I know well and make decisions on what is best for all the children we serve? I made the decision that was important to serve the children of Grand County. I had no personal or political agenda. I just believed that all of our children deserve the very best we have to offer to meet their individual educational needs. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Williams. Mr. Peace?
Ms. Williams, are you able to commit to the variety of meetings and activities of the Board, i.e. first Monday of the month, and our regular scheduled meetings?
Yes. Fortunately for me right now, I am retired. I stay busy. I wonder how I ever got even done before. But I do have a lot of flexibility in my schedule. I discussed it with my family and made them well aware that it would involve being away from home some at night, and possibly some educational opportunities I might want to take advantage of as well. So no, that's not going to be an issue for me.
Thank you. Mr. Udi?
Mr. Chair, this question was just answered by a person. I would like for you to skip this one.
Okay.
It was the same one as on the other.
All right.
Dr. Udi? Yes. Question, what do you hope to bring or add to the Board by your employment, and what are your qualifications to serve on the Board?
Well, I do have a background in education. I know things change, methodologies can change, testing can change, but what happens between a teacher and her student, that doesn't change. The rubber hits the road in the classroom. So I feel like I have an understanding of the student-teacher relationships, administrative relationships, even though I'm sure it's changed since I was in the field of education. I feel like I have the knowledge that I'll be able to hopefully get up to speed and catch up with where everything is and be a contributing person and offer my opinions and be supportive of our staff and teachers and administrators. I also think being in the business community, I'm in the business with my husband, I'm very familiar with overhead, I'm very familiar with hand utilities, all the hidden costs that go along with keeping a building open, selling a building, which we plan to do soon. So I feel like I have that experience too. At one time, I did get my warrant state license, but I didn't particularly like it, so I just let that go. But I did feel like that would help me as well.
Thank you. Ms. Alwright?
Ms. Williams, I want to say that I had Ms. Logan as my first grade teacher as well as our daughter.
I had Ms. Logan as well.
That's exactly where you're coming from.
She compared us with three and two. She sent me some stuff in the mail that I had, a card I had sent home when I was a child, a letter back to Jenny when she was cleaning out her lungs. It was real special.
My question is, what do you see as the current challenges faced by Grand County public schools?
Don't want to hear that.
What do you see as the current challenges?
Current challenges? I think the most important right now, in my opinion, is getting our kids acclimated to the learning environment they're in, managing our educational needs and expectations during this pandemic, and working through that, because that's where we need to be, we need to focus on that. That's the main thing. Obviously, secondary to that would be trying to plan ahead for our resources, our schools, what we're going to do in Southern Indian County. And always keeping in mind that what's going on in the classroom, how our kids are doing in their schools, trying to have the schools that are not performing as well, trying to do everything we can to support the efforts to improve those schools.
Mr. Rivers?
Thank you. First of all, Ms. Williams, thank you so much for stepping up to the challenge of submitting your name. We all appreciate that. My question is, explain your passion for children and their education.
Part of that I said, I really, I might get emotional, so bear with me. When I walked in that classroom in my first day of school, believe it or not, I was a shadow, very quiet, and it had been probably a rough year in my life. I have bits and pieces. You don't remember everything, but you remember certain things. But my father had passed away about three days before my fifth birthday, so my life had changed quite a bit. And the teachers I had encouraged me always. I'm not going to say, I liked every teacher I had, I was scared of one or two of them. And it was a terrible culture, I was just scared of them. Back then, the look, most kids would respond to the look, maybe not so much now. I also had Miss Gay's mom in fifth grade, another teacher that was one of my favorites. But I enjoyed my kids when I taught school. And casting, yes, it's important, but it's nothing like seeing a child get a good grade on paper, be happy about something, come back to you in a couple of years. I had a kid mail us his report card when he got to ninth grade, because he was so proud of how well he'd done. We had some fun with him, and we read for a couple of years back then. But those kids, they respond to a parent teacher, and that's just how I feel about it. I also learned something else, and that is expectations on kids. Everybody's been dealing with it, it's ever taught school, thinking, hmm, I don't think I'd get anything for that child, or that child is probably not, might end up in a really bad spot one day. We're just not doing anything. And we sometimes think they're not going to do things as they get older. We sort of have lower expectations, and we don't need to do that. Because I've seen kids that I thought my first-year teacher, hmm, I don't know, done very well. And when they come back and they send you a note or you on Facebook, and they say, you helped me, you made me like reading, things like that, it makes you feel good inside. So you have to be careful not to have self-provoking prophecy towards your children and have good expectations. My own children, they did okay. My daughter did fine in school. She didn't have quite the passion for learning I did, and she did go to college, she was more of a social butterfly. And my son was diagnosed with learning disability in about sixth or seventh grade, but he had some good resource help, and he got through high school fine, and he is productive and working well. So I've seen all ends of the spectrum, and when I work with exceptional children, I saw children that couldn't walk to go to the talk. And those kids deserve our best as well. We have a broad range of needs in our board.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dr. McKnight?
Ms. Williams, what any previous contacts have you had with the Board of Education or its members?
Well, I did come and speak and supported keeping the school watching what science is open, probably been about three or four years ago. I attended a school board meeting, I think, when my grandson got an academic award in his special workshop. I have watched some of the meetings online recently. I've not been as involved with the board, no, there's other names we know if we run them, through Dr. Bullingham, I've worked on him for a while, and know him as a friend at church, and then his daddy, Ms. Alwright. Mr. Peace, I think, I must know him, speaking of moms. I must know Mr. Peace. I read about it. It was very funny. I had to clean out a storage building. It had some of my items in it. We would purchase something in the yard, so we'd have to keep paying that rental in that storage building. And I was cleaning out some boxes and going through things, and I had a lot of old newspapers. You know how you have your child or your grandchild in something, and you're going to cut it out later, and you don't, which is good papers, and you have to go through the whole paper, find it, why did I save this newspaper? Well, it was amazing how many articles were in the different papers about school news. So I was pulling them out, even though they were three, four, and five years old, so I cleaned them through those.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, what is one initiative you would like to see happen during your time on the Board?
That's a really tough question. I think I would really have to know a little bit more about what's going on in each individual school to really know exactly the direction that I would like to see it go. I would like to see the reading initiative where the kids are reading more. I like the 20 minutes a day that's being recommended for the kids as they're going through that, and that's a good initiative. Of course, again, going back to our schools that are not getting the best grades, I'd like to see that improve. I think another thing is, I would like for us to seriously address how we can stem the exit of kids from public schools into charters and private schools. I have nothing against private schools, I have nothing against charter schools. Every parent has their right to make their own decision, but I want us to promote our schools such that we maybe can stem that somewhat. It's really hard sometimes when your child, your grandchild, or whatever, every child they're around, they're in all these different schools. And sometimes it's not what's really going on in public schools, sometimes it's a perception of what's going on in our town. So I think we have to continually promote what we're doing good in our schools and make that message allow them to hear it. And I hope I could be a good ambassador for our schools.
Mr. Peace?
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Williams, what do you see as the relationship between the Board and the community?
I think we have to be, communicate well what we're doing, and I'm not saying any of these things to say I'm criticizing what's going on, this is just in a general terms. But it's what, it's part of communications, listen. It seems that there is a procedure and format for people to express their opinions, but we still have to listen. People, you hear things in the community, and we need to respond to those. Of course, you have to be very careful when you respond to community questions, because as a Board, we set policies and we have to follow policies. But at the same time, you want to hear what people are saying. If they're saying, this is going on, and I think this school is out there listening to this, we need to listen and then, and then take, like you said, perception can be the problem sometimes.
Ms. Udi?
Ms. Williams, what do you see as the role of the relationship of the Board and the superintendent?
Well, I think we, we be, as a Board, we set the policies, and it's the, if we set policies as a Board, then we need to support the superintendent as she implements those I think the superintendent is seeing things probably from the perspective of what's going on with our schools. We have to be responsive, we have to listen, and hopefully provide for with the opportunities for teachers as well. My understanding is she serves as secretary to the Board, and when the Board does something, it's her responsibility to get information out to the public. I think too, the relationship has to be one where we want continuous improvement in our school system, we want to have thorough evaluation of what's going on with our schools and what's going on in how superintendent is doing. And I think there is a process for that evaluation. And as I understand it, the Boards have to evaluate themselves as well, so.
Dr. Bullingham?
What is your vision for education now and in the future?
My vision for education?
For now and in the future?
In the future. With the technology changes that we've had, we have to make sure our children have the basic skills, because even with the internet, you have to read, the basic skills are still going to be there. And so we have to get that, they, I would like to see technology used but not overused. I don't think it takes the place of a teacher one on one, especially for a younger children. Also have concerns about vocational education. Not every child is destined to go to college, and we have to pay attention to those kids as well. And it's all great and good, you know, this child, that so many got accepted here, so many accepted here, but let's face it, you know, there are many jobs that pay well that these kids can, they need to be prepared in that way as well. And maybe feel good about it, too, that they're on a good track. There's so many social deals in now, trying to provide support for children through social workers is important. It's just an overwhelming task, but we have to do best we can. We have to tackle it with care. We'd like to see, you know, public schools, can't be everything to everybody, but I think we do a good job overall, but it's always going to improve. I think too, the other issue, I would say, we probably need to look at is our middle schools. It seems that we lose kids from elementary to middle, and that's where some of our kids are exiting, exiting the public schools, so we need to see what we can do in that area. And that's a tough age for kids, and it's a tough age for parents as well.
Thank you. Ms. Alwright?
How best does the Board support the vision of Grand County Public Schools and the work we are doing to help our children achieve their goals? How best does the Board support the vision of Grand County Public Schools and the work we are doing to help our children achieve their goals?
Well, I think we support our superintendent and our teachers. We advocate for the programs, and we say that this is our policy, this is what we want done. We don't need to go out and complain about it, we need to unify in our approach to the community. We also need to look at our resources and manage them as fairly and as appropriately as we can, and that's one of the real challenges too. We have a county that is extremely large, and you can have the same county with half the size, the same number of students that they have with your radical size, and you can possibly do more with your resources. But in Grand County, because of our unique, I don't know how unique, but it's fairly unique, it's roundhouse, we have such long distances, the bus routes and all those things, we have a real big challenge trying to make sure we are fair in how we distribute our resources, whether they're human resources, financial or whatever. So budget is the issue.
Ms. Williams, do you have any questions for us as a Board, or anything you'd like to clarify?
I have a lot of questions, but they're probably more school-specific, program-specific, it's not even a general question. I haven't tried to read the passing annual, and it seems like that's something that may need to have a hip to get through.
You don't sleep with them, do you?
I won't try. I'm going to try, if I'm going to point. It is certainly, I commend you, because it is certainly a lot of material, and there are a lot of different schools, a lot of different programs, and I will not pretend that I will be up to speed on all anytime soon, but I'm going to work real hard to do that. I also think it's important for board members, to an extent possible, when a school sends out an invitation for a program, to show up. Sometimes showing up is giving support for the program. That's another way the board can show support. And we need to do everything we can, but let my teachers have this kind of thing.
Board members, anything else that we did not cover? Well, we thank you for your time, Ms. Williams.
Okay, I thank you.
As you may know, we will talk and deliberate today and we will actually vote as one of our first orders of business in November.
Okay, I thank each of you, thanks for the question.
All right, thank you so much. All right, board members, we've come to the place where if you want to as a group discuss how well we've heard, where we're at, and if you have questions about the process or anything in that picture. And so at this time, we'll open up the floor. Yes, sir?
I want to comment about this one. I think number one, that we would be unbelievably lucky to have someone like Ms. Wood on this board. She is a class act, she is good at management, she knows what it's like to be in the central office and all that good stuff. And I thought her answer about the role of the board and superintendent, I thought that was a very good answer. Clearly understands that our job is to set policy. And it's your job, superintendent's job to carry that. And then to go a little bit further, she also talked strongly about evaluation. The evaluation of the superintendent and the evaluation of the board. And I thought those were two very good points. Bottom line is, ladies, I've known her, I, I, I'm so glad that she picked up. I didn't know that she would, but I'm so glad she did. And she would contribute so much to this board and I support her.
Thank you, sir. Others, Ms. Williams?
I feel the same way. And I feel like her teaching background is going to be a very valuable asset to this board. And I also feel like her, her heart and her passion for education is just going to take a turn itself. I don't think that she's a really good teacher anyway. I'm also glad she.
I would agree with Ms. Williams. I think the heart aspect is pretty important. I think she truly does care. So I'm, I'm very pleased that I pulled her, she stepped forward.
Dr. McGlynn?
I agree with my board members. I think she's a great candidate for this. Having that background and looking at her really helped strengthen us. And I'm also very encouraged that one of her initiatives that she really wants to focus on is around these. Because that's one of those things that I really have a passion for. I really like to see that.
I, yes, sir, I was impressed. If we, I think, this is what I was thinking. I think that's important there. But I'm happy for my colleagues, whether it be, probably she made it sound good anymore. It's one of the things that I do not anticipate.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, she's going to be an excellent candidate for the board. She's very knowledgeable, a lot more than what she was able to tell us tonight and show during the time. I could get that by the answers she was giving to some of these questions. She's got very good communication skills. And that's going to be one of the biggest things for the school. Be able to communicate what we did with the public.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, please.
I was very impressed that she's already lived in the policy.
And she's still. Didn't steer her away. Yeah, didn't steer her away. Laura?
I'd like to add one more quick. Another answer that was so important that sometimes we as a board overlook is, she's got two children. One of them who went to college and one of them who was in vocational education and had that experience. And in fact, she has had that experience. And number two, she said that, you know, we need to talk about how good Stowall Shale is. But we also need to talk more about vocational education. She's absolutely right. Because a lot of our kids don't need to go to college. And I thought bringing that to personal to the board would be very helpful.
Anything else? To remind you that this will be one of the first items of business for the November 2nd meeting. Based on whatever you voted that means, we'll have a judge on standby that night to swear their end that night. If it is affirmative, so she'll take the seat in November, so there won't be a lapse but in a day. If it is the alternative, then we will discuss as a board what to move forward for. All right, well, thank you for your time and doing that, and I really appreciate that. Next, moving on, Madam Superintendent, I believe we have a revision to our calendar.
Absolutely, yes, sir. Dr. Wood, I see.
I was just gonna ask a question. Yes, sir.
Doctor Wood.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. McLean. Tonight, we're bringing back to you a clerical revision to the calendar. There was a mistake that was made with the early release day was inadvertently moved when I brought you the last revision to move the remote learning day. So I'm bringing this back to you just to change, making October the 27th an early release day for elementary schools as it was originally intended to. Just to fix a clerical error.
So, boards, you hear this coming as a recommendation that we change October 27th back to an early release day. It was a clerical error there. So I'm ready to entertain a motion if you are so inclined. So a motion by Mr. Peace, do I have a second to approve the calendar as we present? Second by Dr. McKnight, is there any further questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, they're curious. Next, Madam Superintendent, is a update on our sign?
Yes, there was a matter at South Bramble High School, a request for an athletic sign. Doctor Wood, will you bring our board up to speed on the sign matter at South Bramble High School, please?
Yes, ma'am. Board members probably recall some email communications I've sent out about this effort. Dr. McLean stated the athletic department came to me last winter requesting to investigate the possibility of setting up an electronic marquee, display sign out front of the school. I submitted a application for permit to the city of Creedmore. And that was initially tabled because of some questions regarding the specifications of the sign and whether or not it was appropriate. That has since gone back to the planning department after I met with members of the city council, excuse me, the city staff at South Bramble. The planning department last week made a recommendation that the sign could be placed there if they removed the historic, or if we removed the historic South Bramble sign. I spoke with the interim city manager today and also the director of the planning department. And I made it clear to them that we had no intention of removing the historic sign. We were just applying for a permit for the new one. He let me know that the planning department simply makes recommendations and that the county commissioners would be bringing this matter up again on November 2nd when they need. So they will consider the application for the sign again. I realize that this has caused some controversy, especially among alumni at the school regarding the sign. And so we've tried to make it very clear that we have never asked for that historical sign to be removed. And that's not our intention. So we'll continue to work through the process and I will keep you all informed as new information comes my way.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Wood? All right. Next, Madam Superintendent, remote learning centers update?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'd like to turn this portion of the meeting over to Ms. Day along with Ms. Hunt, I believe. Ms. Day and Ms. Hunt. We have a new remote learning center, support center opportunity for our students throughout the district. Ladies, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. McLean, board members. In board docs, you have, the finance committee met last Wednesday. You have a copy of the minutes from that meeting and the notes from that meeting. And the main topic during that meeting was about the remote learning support centers. And Ms. Hunt and Dr. Watson were there available at that meeting to discuss this. We're gonna give you a brief overview of that discussion and then share with you the recommendations on the topics in it. The, we received, David County schools received funding from the governor's emergency education relief fund. We received $89,055. When we received those funds, our CNI department worked really hard to try to meet some of the needs that we knew that our families had, as well as our employees, with what, what, some support on the remote learning days. And so this is where the remote learning support centers came from, that came from. And it's funded with this, these federal funds that we received as relief funds. And the next slide is the brochure about the support centers. I'm gonna now turn it over to this Hunt to talk about those centers. They actually started today and we have a lot of, a lot of participation in it.
Yes. Yeah, Ms. Wood. So we started out with the remote learning support centers at three locations. And due to the high demand of people wanting to participate, we had to add a fourth location. So our locations are at Buckminster Middle School, Mary Potter Center of Education, Buckminster Middle School, and also Tar River Elementary. We have 120 seats at the centers. We make sure that the students get breakfast, they get lunch, and they also get a snack in the afternoon. During the day, the staff that are hired, they make sure that they are focused on the academics and they are in resumed classes and that they're doing their work. And then in the afternoon, the YNCA, who we're partnered with, they are doing enrichment activities with them. The program today is the first day, so it's been a busy day, but everything has gone well with the, with the kids and making sure that they're doing their work. If they're on an eight-day schedule at their schools, then that means that they will go to school on Monday and Tuesday, and they will go to remote centers on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And if they are on B schedule at their schools on Thursday and Friday, then they will go to their remote center on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And there was a $35 registration fee.
The next slide includes the applicants.
And then on the next slide, you can see the number of applicants. We have 157. On each site, you can see the number of applicants that applied, as well as the number of students that we have on the waiting list. Mount Energy and Tar River, we split that between two schools because of Mount Energy, a spacing issue. So we made sure to add Tar River. So we put 20 at Mount Energy and 20 at Tar River so that we could still have 120 seats. And we have 46 students that are still on the waiting list. Parents had until today, that means they had, and if they did not claim their seat, then we would go to the next student that is on the waiting list. And this slide shows you staff application. As far as Buckminster Elementary, there were eight staff members, but a total of 10 students from Bramble County. There were no non-Bramble County students. At the Mary Potter Center of Education, there are 15 total staff members who applied with a total of 20 students in all. And there are four students that are non-Bramble County students that applied. Mount Energy, we have nine Bramble staff members with 11 students. And then there are two students that are non-Bramble County students that applied. And at Tar River, we had two staff members, a total of four students, and two staff, two students that are non-Bramble students that applied. So we have eight students that are non-Bramble County students that have applied for this program.
So that was the main purpose of, in the discussion that came to the finance committee was because the funding that we received for this program that we're using for this program can only be used for Bramble County students. So the question was, when we have employees to apply that had students that didn't attend Bramble County schools, what do we, what should we do? And so the next slide is the recommendation from the finance committee. Recommended exhausting the waitlist for Bramble County public school students first. And then if slots are available, appropriating local dollars to cover the cost for that out of district applicant. So that is the recommendation of the finance committee. Ms. Rich, is there more you want to add?
Ms. Hall, if you have anything to add. One of the biggest things that was the focus for the finance committee was as well as, or as much as we want to make sure we take care of our teachers and our staff, we owe it to the Bramble County students first to appropriate those spaces for those students first.
Mr. Chair, I'm maybe just confused. Appropriating local dollars to cover the cost of out of district applicants? I don't think that.
Because the parents are for us.
They're, they are staff children, the staff are with us. We saw it as a teacher retention tool if we got to that.
And they're saying not to do that, to take the Bramble County students first and not to do that.
Dr. Wood, you can go back a couple of slides to the, one more before that. But this was, these are people currently on the waitlist, the number of students that are on the waitlist that would go through first before those non-out of districts.
I did have a conversation with staff about whether we can use Bramble County funds. But the, to me, the difference here from some other program is that it's a benefit to our employees. So it's like giving our employees a childcare voucher, whether or not their kids are enrolled here. But certainly the decision prioritizes kids who aren't enrolled here. I think so. I mean, let me say this, and you're not the only district who's asked me this question. No one's ever tried to do this before, because it's never had to. But I can't come up with anything that I'm not.
And I think the finance committee's thought is, looking at those numbers of waiting list applications. I don't know that we're gonna zip through those waiting list applications and then get to that. If those people had signed up.
Yes, sir. Just a question for Ms. Hunt is that either one, I noticed that there's three southern schools and one northern school, actually one center county, which is Mary Potter, that the largest number of students will be in Mary Potter. Was there any, any concern about not supporting, say, Stowall Shaw or something more than North County rather than having three in the south? Especially with the low numbers at Tar River?
There were students that applied from all of the schools in the district, from the elementary to the middle school. So we have students that are participating in those schools.
It just seemed like it's weighted disproportionately to the southern end.
Well, we also had, when they applied, we also had a rubric that they would, we had to complete. So that would have the slots we're given by the rubric that we completed. But I mean, there are some students, there's a student in this dish, on this side that is going to the southern end and they chose that that's when they need to drop off.
Did that answer your question, Ms. Williams?
Yeah, really. I didn't understand it, but.
Space was also another issue and another factor in why there were two, initially two sites in the southern part of the county of Buckminster and at Mount Energy. We also considered Bramble Central High School, but we took that one off the table because these students are primarily in elementary and middle school. We did look at Stowall Shaw as a site, but Stowall Shaw did not have the space that we would need to hold a site there. So that's why we ended at Mount Energy. And Tar River wasn't initially a site, but the space we had at Mount Energy because of things that had gotten switched around where Mr. Moore had put in a sit room and so forth. So that took away one of the spaces that we could use there. So rather than trying to have all of those students in one space, we split those two groups out. So it's still 40 students at the Mount Energy, Tar River site. So, but we did try to have one at Stowall.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. And I just didn't notice kind of the rubrics you were talking about, but that, that makes sense. Thank you.
Dr. Wood?
Yeah, you may have said this, but I can put it again. What is the focus? What is the goal of having these centers over there?
Well, the goal of having the centers is that we are helping our students who are coming to school face-to-face, and we're also supporting our teachers so that their children can have somewhere to go as well.
Okay, so it's not, um, so it's not about focusing on low performing children or children from socio-economically challenged or whatever. It's not about that?
Yes, that was part of the information we had to get out to each student with, with the rubric. We had to get that information to see performance, their grades, behaviors. We looked at, um, the social needs of the parents, their working conditions. So we looked at different things that we use to categorize the students to be a part of this program.
And so, uh, the, the socioeconomic issue was addressed.
So I have your question. I guess, maybe Dr. Willhand can share. So, so, I, I support the intent of what we're trying to do, but, I mean, where do we, how do we end this? Where do we stop it? I mean, the, um, we don't really have the money. We've got grant law certificates, but we don't have the money to provide it here for us.
It's not that easy. We're getting very clear not to call it.
Okay. Essentially, on the one, my, my heart says, yes, we got to enroll, we hand to our teachers. My head says, we just got to be careful that we don't get obligated to spend the money that we don't have, particularly teachers and social workers, to try to provide free childcare, having one call. See what I'm saying? I mean, other, other employers do and don't do that. I mean, big corporations will have provided, you know, childcare or whatever. I don't know, we're positioned, we can afford this, if, if that's needed, if that needs to happen.
I see our grant extraordinary, Dr. Johnson, this stepped up to the plate.
Good afternoon, everyone. I, I just want to add one point of clarification. So the PRC one seventy funds that we're using are federal funds that are specifically, um, allocated for our at-risk students. So we had to prioritize our at-risk students, which at-risk could be academically, socially, economically, or whatever, you know, the category is, we had to make sure we prioritized at-risk students using these funds.
And I think to answer your question, Mr. Rivers, is that this wouldn't occur without these grants.
Absolutely.
We're not going to continue this if this, if the grants won't be here.
This is just gear money.
Yes.
These are gear dollars as the result of the pandemic, and this is not local money, this isn't state money. This, these are gear dollars.
So it sounds like this is more the other one needed, is that they're going to get the full cost.
Yes, sir. And that's why they had to have a rubric. So we had more people apply than we actually have slots for. We only have a hundred and twenty slots. And so it was difficult to determine, so they had to come up with a clear way to determine who would actually get the slots and then evenly distribute based on that. But the money, you're right, is the only one to help us so far. These are the only dollars. All we have, what is it, eighty-nine thousand? This is it. This is all there is.
And Ms. Day, I believe one of our questions was, how long that money with this rubric, how long would it last?
And it's eight weeks.
Did we say eight weeks?
Eight weeks.
Eight weeks.
Sorry, I'm reading.
This is it.
Other questions?
I just, I, I, it, what is, what, what I'm simply raised as a construct to get an answer, is that we have, in this part of the county, a lot of our students, the vast majority of our students in the four parts, and I hate to go into such, but our, our, you know, I don't need to tell you about the needs there. Uh, Dr. Stan? Yes, they got roughly the same kind of need. I just don't get Tar River.
I think what you may be confusing is not necessarily pulling kids from those schools. They are just a location.
Yeah.
So it may be that a kid lives up here, but their parents drop them off down there because they're going to their work.
Okay, all right. Okay.
So is that an information that we should give? About four or two, how many is going to go? How many do we need on parent board or what?
Absolutely. We can share the rubrics as well. Um, again, there was a ranking system, so just because they're assigned to a, a school that may not have, you know, a high, um, low income student rate, they, we still can show you how those students rank on the scale and why they were chosen.
That's helpful. Thank you for being, thank you very much. I didn't understand that.
You'll never get that? Because I believe another factor we don't want to forget was the social distancing piece and having to have a school that had space availability to that, play that. But if we could get that for our board members, he won't forget that for us. That would be helpful, I guess.
All right, board, this does come to you as an action item. You have a recommendation from the finance committee. Can we read that recommendation or?
I do have just one quick question I just thought about. With the eighty-nine thousand that's coming from the governor's emergency education relief line, you said this lasts about eight weeks? If this continues the way things are looking, are we looking to maybe procure some grants from somewhere else if we need to stretch this out another eight weeks?
We certainly are. We have applied for the Icare plan, which will actually, um, cover the remainder of the year, should we receive those funds. And we'll find out in December if we receive those funds.
Yes.
And hopefully maybe enough to restrain any?
Yes.
Pick up another poison.
Absolutely.
It's scheduled to serve more children than I care, so if we are fortunate enough to get.
So the recommendation from the finance committee is there. The finance committee recommends exhausting the waitlist for Gravel County public school students first, then if slots are available, appropriating local dollars to cover the cost out of, out of the district applicants. What would be the thought of the board?
Question, Rubric.
There. We have a motion by Dr. McKnight and a second by Dr. Willhand. Is there further discussion? CNI, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, ladies and ladies and gentlemen. All right, for the next, for the major chunk of what tonight is for, school improvement plans, so Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Michael Myrick and Mrs. Michelle Robinson at this point, if you give us our conclusions for the evening.
I'm going to refer to Ms. Robinson.
Absolutely. Good evening, Ms. Robinson.
Good afternoon, everyone. So it is that time of year again where you have an opportunity to listen sometime with the principals, talking about whatever questions you have for them regarding how they're working in their schools and what they're working on in their school. Um, we have set this up in rotations, very much like last year, so I'm going to give you a quick registration. Dr. Myrick has provided you with a list of the groups and the rotations. Can I check that, Mike?
Yes, it's in the back of your folder.
So if you'll look in the back of your folder, we have, um, three groups. We are going to make a quick change. Um, Dr. McKnight, you will now join Mr. Richardson in the registration center, not in ring three of six. Okay? Um, we will have two groups meeting here, and then once we're meeting in the registration center, the principals are already reached out and ready for you. Um, the rotations are quick, they're about twelve minutes, and you'll have two schools meeting with you at a time. So this is your chance to, to sit and talk, ask what you would like to ask, just engage in a conversation with the principals. They have brought along with them, um, one additional person from their school, whether it's their assistant principal or somebody from their school group. Um, and there is a note taker in each group who's capturing the conversation. So there's, there's many to look at that way. So we will just, any more questions?
Yeah, we have a facilitator.
Yes, and you'll have a facilitator from, from, so let's get started and, and get started. Um, in this room, we will have two, two groups. One group is Dr. Willhand and Mr. Rivers. One group is Mr. Tease and Ms. Oris. So either Dr. Willhand and Ms. Oris switch, or Mr. Tease and Mr. Rivers switch, whichever y'all prefer. Um, and Dr. McKnight and Mr. Richardson, you will head up the ramp to the parent resource center. That'd be someone that they can be. The principals are already up there and ready for you. Okay? And we'll get the principals for this room.
Was there a follow-up question, board members, to the school improvement plans?
I would just like to ask, you know, what is your take? I mean, you're, you're clearly, you know, know this stuff, what is your take in terms of student performance stuff being gone last year and then being, I mean, what, what is your take on all that?
So I think it's really hard right now because we don't have, well, we're in the process of getting new data right now. Uh, we are, and the data that we're getting right now is through I-Radi. Our, um, preschools are almost through assessing, our middle schools are in the middle of assessing. Um, that is the freshest data that we'll have, uh, in terms of where students really are. That then becomes the data that we can use to plan instruction and plan, in a very targeted way. So what I'm encouraging the principals to do, um, as they get their I-Radi data, to incorporate that into their performance measures in their plan. The other value of that is that is data that we will capture all year long, not just at the end of the year. So that's, that's sort of where we're sitting. They go ahead and establish goals and establish performance measures based on what they knew. Uh, we hope to get new EVOs data before too much longer, which will again provide some new projections, and they'll go in and refine those performance measures based on that new data coming in. So I think once we have that, we'll be a little stronger. They have actions in their plans. You guys asked the right questions before about what is, what is in your plan because it worked, and what's no longer in your plan because it didn't work. Oftentimes this year, it was in my plan, it seemed like it was working, but we didn't have time to play it out. So the plans stayed pretty stable from last year, adding in some actions around remote learning and those kinds of things. Um, so there's not a dramatic difference in the plans this year from last year, just some tweaking. Now, once this new data comes in, when we have some pressure data, I expect plans will get a revision at that point. Does that help?
Yes, yeah. It's very helpful. Any other questions, board members?
That was good.
All right, so Dr. Myrick, you said that these will be brought back to the board for the November second?
That is correct. So where we are in the process is that you, you have received them, you had a chance to review them, you had a chance to talk, to speak with the principals. At your November meeting, you will vote to accept, reject, or revise those plans. And once that vote occurs, then we'll submit them to the state. And that submission has to occur by, uh, December. We will do that in November, once you, you vote in November.
Now, will the groups get notes from the other groups like we did last year?
Yeah. Yes, sir. Each group has a note taker. And hopefully we can have them by the November, at least by the November second, we can party in there. But no Friday? I told them to have them by Friday, so it should be able to get them out by this Friday.
Okay, good, that'll give us time to. All right, so board members, where we stand here is you'll get notes, and then by the November second board meeting, you'll be prepared to come back and move on these plans. All right? Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Myrick, Dr. McLean. All right. So next up, we have, uh, we would adjourn in the closed session according to North Carolina General Statute one, according three, three eighteen, eleven, A one, and three. Attorney Cloud, privilege. Do we have someone that would make that motion?
Okay.
Do we have someone for a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, a motion by Dr. Willhand, a second by Dr. McKnight. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Uh.
All those opposed? So that night, you see there, my winter graduation, and drop the retirement parade. Have you ever been a part of our retirement celebration? Uh, that's taken a little twist this year, but if it is, like the other things we've done through and that, I think it'll be special for them. So anything from anybody else? Yeah, I'm sorry, the board meeting will be back here at Mary Potter. No, on November second. So the twenty-sixth is at Butler Stadium Middle.
Butler Stadium Middle.
Middle, yeah. We did that to kind of accommodate space, and then November second, the board meeting will be back here at Mary Potter.
And this is six o'clock at Butler Stadium?
Yes.
On the next one?
Yep, six o'clock Monday, and then the following Monday is six o'clock.
Could you take two minutes and go through what we'll be doing and how that may involve?
So essentially, so, correct me if I'm wrong, on board docs, you'll have those final reports, uh, incorporating the suggestions that came from the board members, if you see them. So you'll read those over the weekend when we come back. So the board needs to decide how they will, um, move forward. Will that look like narrowing it down to one school to make a move? Will that be halting the whole study? Basically, we just need to decide how to move forward. You will receive two final reports on, or a final report on both of those schools. It's really up to the board of how we move forward.
All right. If someone wants to, uh, propose an alternative, how, would we want to get that to the board beforehand, or where you could tell them to have a discussion?
I really feel like it needs to be during the night of discussion. Am I correct about that?
That's right. Okay.
I would think so, just for the sake of transparency. How would y'all feel about having a facilitator come like we have before to walk through that final study and make some decisions? I think it would be productive, that usually helps us.
I think it's been funny, I mean, I think you're a very good facilitator. I, I think you do a great job. I think we need to bring somebody in because we don't know how this is going to go and how, um, I don't think it's, we, so.
I don't want you to be. Let me ask this question. We did the final reports for Tola or Mary Potter. Did we have a facilitator that night?
No. Didn't? No, we didn't.
For the final reports, or, I know not for the vote.
I don't think so. That was two weeks ago.
She was with us.
We had somebody. I think, I may be wrong. Not for the final. She was there for earlier part. I don't think she was there for the final, but that may have. I think she was there, we, we definitely, if I remember now, Tola, because it was a very sensitive evening with, with, uh, Mr. Smith. I, and then I think that, but I do think we had somebody, and I, and I thought, and I'm thinking that, I don't know that we would have gotten where we got without having a facilitator. But that's, I may be completely wrong. See, I just, I, I do not, I've not been impressed with our facilitators. And the reason I say that is, there's so much more that we know that one of us knows, like Dave. There's so much more understanding the community sensitivities, the nuances, all these things that facilitators just don't know. And on something like this, I just think you need to have that prior knowledge. Um, I just would hate to have on something this important to have someone that, that doesn't know it as well as we do and maybe not, not do it right. I, I have great confidence that you would do it right. Uh, I don't know if another facilitator would do it right. So I guess I'm, I'm looking at, I know, I know what I've got with you. I, I know, you know, you're starting the meetings.
I know, you know, you're stopped running the meetings. We bring someone else in, and it's just, it's a, it's a loose hand. We don't know. And so it's, if I didn't think you could handle it, I would agree, but I think that you can do a very good job. My personal opinion, I'm not trying to blow smoke, but I just don't know if we get someone else in here that they would do the good job.
Well, Rob, if I could, a facilitator will be completely unbiased. And there is, I mean, you're going to have people with Creedmore, you're going to have people from Wilton or whatever, and it's going to be an extraordinarily sensitive evening. I mean, closing Toler was, I mean, you know, that was tough. But this isn't the vote. This is just the reports and files. I'm not talking about the vote. I'm talking about how we process and go through there and talk about it. And, you know, I say something and somebody doesn't get mad or whatever. I just, I just would rather be, be, it just makes it safe and sorry. In other words, this is so sensitive and will have such ramifications that to, that's just.
And that's just maybe itself's off, but.
Sure.
Because I mean, with David, I think, you know, he has skin in the game. He, he knows that he has got to be careful and measure his words very carefully. Facilitator doesn't in this case, and I agree because of the sensitivity. I like David, just as you think because of the sensitivity, don't put David in that position. And I understand, I understand exactly what you're saying. I just.
It's just a different way of looking at it.
Yes, a different way of looking. I just, I just worry that, especially since we're not voting. We're mainly just getting reports. I'm assuming Stan gives reports, is that right, and for your staff?
The entire staff will give their portion per school.
Okay, and then.
How do you feel about it, though? I think that's important.
Yeah, that's, I'm putting a Nazi.
Right.
I mean, I could go, I'm going to serve as the player to the board. I can do whatever. I see, I see value in both. I lean towards the value of a facilitator for the fact of then I can actively engage in the conversation, you know? And that would be the biggest plus I see to having a facilitator is that I can, can actively, actively participate where I can't as chairperson.
I think a facilitator would be a lot, I, I understand what you're saying about this guy's skin in the game, but I think a facilitator being objective and somebody to guide us through the child number in this business.
And I would almost say kind of what you're saying with the sensitivity. Dr. Quick's been through this work all along since the very beginning with us. If we could get Dr. Quick, she knows kind of how we, how we work, but also kind of what the community's made up of as well. And I wouldn't just bring just anybody to come in here and lead the conversation.
We want to leave it at if we get somebody that we think, and but if we don't, then you're, you've got to do it. I mean, you know, don't, we don't just take someone, take them. We take someone who's a proper person. And if not, I really do think you can do a fine job. And I understand what you're saying about wanting to engage more rather than lead the discussion, be able to comment. So I think, well, maybe leave it at that, if we can get somebody that, that we think is proven track by, like, you know, Dr. Cook, Ms. Cook, I remember, you know, maybe that's how it goes. But if we fail like that, then we don't just take any time to area.
Dr. McKnight, do you have a?
I would say ladies and gentlemen, I think it's going to be a little tougher.
All right, let's see what we can work out there. Anything else for open session?
Pete brought it down.
No, that's good, that's good.
All right.
Mr. Griffin, Dr. Myrick sent us some things about test data or whatever it is. He sent us a comparison between 17, 18, and 18, 19?
Yes, that was the fall data when Ms. Cook presented at the regular state board meeting. I believe it was Mr. Rivers asked for the CCR.
Right.
Components that would go along with that, and the information that was in there were two attachments. One was an Excel spreadsheet, and it had the fall data of 18, 19, and the fall data of 17, 18, which is what Ms. Cook used to talk through her presentation with. And then also there was a brief analysis attached in a Word document to talk about those.
And we sent it to, I just wondered if I was obliged for sure.
All right, anything else? All right, take a motion to adjourn?
No vote.
Second.
So we got a motion by Dr. Willan, a second by Mr. Rivers. Any further discussion? All those, I don't even know what we're doing now. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? All right.